And welcome to the April 23 meeting of the Portland City Council. Would you please call the roll?
Fish.
Here.
Salzman.
Here.
Novick.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Hales.
Here. Welcome, everyone. We have two items before us, both land use cases. So let's read the first one, 413.
Appeal of Preserve the Pearl LLC against Design Commission's decision to approve a new full-block mixed-use project in the Central City Plan District's River Subdistrict at 1241 Northwest Johnson Street, LU-14-230014DZM.
Okay. And before we get into the procedures for that, we need to recognize some kids who are here, whose parents work for the Bureau of Development Services, right?
Right. The folks in the upper gallery are the parents and children of people who work at the Bureau of Development Services, and they're here to watch democracy in action.
Let's give them a round of applause.
All right, welcome.
Mayor, I see a future Water Bureau employee.
I think you're right. Prepared and safe and everything else. At the rate things are going around here, we're going to need some more employees soon. Okay, welcome. So here's some introductory points, and then I'll turn to the city attorney for some more as well. The council previously heard this appeal on April 8th, and we held the record open until 5:00 PM on April 15th so that people could submit additional testimony. And then we set this time for council deliberation. There were two members of council who are not present on April 8th who will be participating in the deliberations today, Commissioner Novick and Commissioner Salzman. Would you please confirm that you've received and reviewed the record of this appeal?
I have.
I have also.
Okay, thank you. And then we're required, of course, to disclose if there are any council members, including the ones who just joined this discussion now, who have any ex parte contacts or potential conflicts of interest to declare. Okay, hearing none. Anyone who have a question about council's objectivity in this case? These land use cases are important. Do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Then I'm going to turn this over to the city attorney to talk about anything else that we need to cover in terms of the procedure, and then we'll go on into our deliberation.
Okay. So the evidentiary record in this case is closed, and all that's left to do is to deliberate, to have council discussion and deliberations. As staff outlined at the last hearing, your options are to uphold the appeal and overturn the Design Commission's decision thereby denying the application, or to deny the appeal, affirming the Design Commission's decision and approving the application, or something in between if there are additional conditions. In this case, because of the amount of additional evidence that was submitted, it is recommended that any council action be a tentative vote for a return with findings, whichever direction you go. That's all I have to say.
All right, great. Thank you. Any questions for the city attorney? So if there are no questions for the attorney or staff, then it's time for a motion on this case, if someone's prepared to make one.
I move to deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion of that motion? Okay, then roll call, please, on the motion.
Fish.
Aye.
Salzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Well, there's a lot of thoughtful testimony on this, but some excellence, and also some excellent staff work, and a great recommendation from the Design Commission, so I'm very much in favor of the motion. Aye.
Hales.
There was a lot of thoughtful testimony, and I appreciated it, but I think if you look at the criteria and the project as proposed, that this is a very clear decision. First, there were several public hearings held on this project. Actually, I think a total of six, if you include ours. And that's a pretty impressive number of public hearings and a pretty high level of public review. Secondly, I think the buildings that are proposed are particularly respectful of the 13th Avenue Historic District. I thought that the architectural team did a very good job of being respectful of that district. The orientation of the project, to me, makes sense. It's the least impactful, and it makes the most sense with respect to the way the pedestrian network works in that part of the Pearl District. The mixed-use and townhouse units really create activity at street level, which is a design criterion that I care a lot about. The courtyard provides very generous public space. So I think that, on balance, the team that designed this project did a very good job of following our design goals, and that's why the Design Commission upheld it as well. So I think it is not appropriate for the council to reverse their decision. Aye. Okay.
So what we need to do is find a time for coming back with revised findings. City code provides that the applicant, if represented by an attorney, will prepare those findings to be reviewed by the city attorney, and so I would ask the applicant's attorney to advise of how long they would like and when they anticipate wanting to come back to council.
So how much time would you like to prepare findings with the city attorney's consultation?
I would like Mayor Hales four weeks to allow us to work on that. The city to have time to work, to look and prepare.
And that's acceptable to the city attorney's office, so we'd need to check with Carla to see what is available in four weeks' time.
So four weeks, or a little more than four weeks from now? Carla, what looks possible?
And if it needs to be a Wednesday morning, that's fine, too, because I know your afternoons are booked.
Would May 20th be too soon, or that's exactly four weeks out, May 20th? Okay, then it would be 10:40 on May 20th, 10:40 AM.
What day is that, Carla?
It's a Wednesday morning.
That's a Wednesday, so that's our regular Wednesday morning session. That work?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll set that for 10:40 AM on Wednesday, the 20th.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Okay, let's move on to the next case, which is 414.
Consider proposal of the City of Portland Water Bureau for historic demolition review and the Bureau of Development Services staff and Portland Historic Landmarks Commission recommendation for approval for the demolition of the 1894 Reservoir Number Three, 1894 Reservoir Number Four, and the 1946 Ware Building, all contributing resources in the Washington Park Historic District at 2403 Southwest Jefferson Street, LU-14-249689DM.
Okay, thank you very much. So again, once again, want to make sure that we check with council members to see if anyone has any ex parte contacts or potential conflicts of interest to disclose.
Mayor, a reporter earlier asked me what this hearing was about, and I said it was a land use type proceeding, but I could not discuss anything further, and I have no other, no conflicts to disclose.
Anyone else?
I met with Water Bureau staff before they submitted their application to discuss the design elements, but not since.
Anyone have any questions for council members about those disclosures? Okay. So this is a quasi-judicial land use hearing. We will begin with a staff report, followed by proposals from the applicant, right? Have I got that right? Yes. And then supporters of the applicant will be given time to testify, and then if there is an opponent or a principal opponent, they'll be given time to present their case, and supporters of the opponents given time to testify individually. There'll be council discussion and potentially a tentative decision today. So the attorney, any additional points that you want to cover?
I do. I have a few opening remarks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an evidentiary hearing. This means you may submit new evidence to the council in support of your arguments. Testimony will be heard as follows. We will begin with a staff report by BDS staff for approximately 10 minutes. Following the staff report, the city council will hear from interested persons in the following order. The applicant will go first, and will have 10 minutes to address the council. After the applicant, the council will hear from individuals or organizations who support the applicant's proposal. Each person will have three minutes to speak. Next, council will hear from persons or organizations who oppose the applicant's proposal. Again, each person will have three minutes. If there was testimony in opposition to the applicant's proposal, the applicant will have five additional minutes to rebut testimony given in opposition to the proposal. The council may then close the hearing and deliberate. The council may vote today. If the vote is a tentative one, the council will set a future date for the adoption of findings and a final vote. If the council takes a final vote on the findings and recommendations today, that will conclude the matter before council. I'd like to talk about several guidelines for those who will be addressing the council today. Any letters or documents you wish to become part of the record should be given to the council clerk after you testify. Similarly, the original or a copy of any slides, photographs, drawings, maps, videos, or other items you showed to the council during your testimony, including any presentation materials, should be given to the council clerk to make sure they become part of the record. Testimony must be directed to approval criteria. Any testimony, arguments, and evidence you present must be directed toward the applicable approval criteria for this land use review, or other criteria in the city's comprehensive plan or zoning code that you believe apply to the decision. The BDS staff will identify the applicable approval criteria as part of their staff report to the council. You must raise an issue clearly enough to give the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue. If you don't, you will be precluded from appealing to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Finally, I'd like to note that any party may today, prior to the conclusion of the hearing, ask that the hearing be continued or that the record be held open for additional evidence, testimony, or argument. And that's all for me, for now.
Thank you. So, Mr. Fritz, do you have any opening comments before we turn it over to Ms. Adam?
Thank you, ma'am. So good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here. We're here to discuss and consider a City of Portland Type IV land use application for demolition review to remove the Washington Park reservoirs. This review considers the merits of the proposed replacement development as part of the approval criteria. However, approval of this application only approves the demolition of the three historic structures. A separate Type III land use review must be approved after this one, if it is approved, for the replacement development prior to issuance of a development permit. We know that many Portlanders are very unhappy with the LT2 rule. I happen to be one of them. We are not here to discuss the merits of the LT2 rule, which is a federal mandate that has been given to the City of Portland, which I fought for a long time, and which the council has directed the Water Bureau to comply with. That's not a factor in whether the approval criteria are met in this case. We are only looking at Washington Park today. That is the only site under consideration. So the decision before council this afternoon is whether the specific Washington Park proposal presented in the land use application satisfies the relevant demolition review criteria. And as you've heard from the city attorney, please direct your testimony to the approval criteria for this application, as that is all that we are allowed to consider in making our decision. Turn it over to staff Hillary Adam from the Bureau of Development Services.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hillary Adam, BDS. As you said, this is a demolition review, LU-14-249689.
Your voice is a little bit hilly.
Yeah.
Maybe you want to move the mic a little closer, so you're comfortable.
Slide that whole thing closer, if you want.
Oh, does it?
The big box, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So this is an outline of the Type IV demolition review process. May 2014, the Portland Water Bureau had a pre-application conference on this proposal and the follow-up proposals, or the follow-up applications, which would be a conditional use review, a historic resource review, and an environmental review. They had one voluntary briefing and three voluntary design advice hearings with the Historic Landmarks Commission. We issued public notice of the Historic Landmarks Commission meeting and the city council hearing, and we posted the sites for both dates. We had the Historic Landmarks Commission meeting, March 23rd. That was advisory, and I prepared a staff recommendation to city council, which the commission reviewed and provided advice on. They have also written letters, which have been forwarded to you. So now we're at the city council hearing, and just as a reminder, as Commissioner Fritz stated, a demolition permit will not be issued until a permit is issued for the replacement proposal, which is to be reviewed under a separate Type III land use application. So we have two precedents for Type IV review. In 2010, city council reviewed demolition of the Kiernan Building, also known as the Dirty Duck Tavern, and in that situation, council approved the demolition because they found that the proposed replacement facility, a soup kitchen, and long-term housing, and other services, was the highest and best use of that site. So they found that, on balance, the approval criteria for demolition were met. Last December, we reviewed proposed demolition of the Buck Prager Building in the Alphabet Historic District. That was a three-story former hospital building that was proposed to be demolished and replaced with a four-to-six-story apartment building. In that situation, council denied the application because they found that there was no significant public benefit to compensate for the loss of the historic resource. So the approval criteria for, or the purpose of a demolition review is to protect resources that have been classified as contributing in a historic district, and also recognizes that historic resources are irreplaceable assets that preserve our heritage, beautify the city, enhance civic identity, and promote economic vitality. And demolition review approval criteria are one of the following. One, denial of a demolition permit would effectively deprive the owner of all reasonable economic use of the site, or demolition of the resource has been evaluated against and on balance has been found supportive of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and any relevant area plans. The evaluation may consider factors such as the merits of demolition, the merits of development that could replace the demolished resource, either specifically proposed for the site or is allowed under the existing zoning. The effect demolition of the resources would have on the area's desired character, the effect that redevelopment on the site would have on the area's desired character, the merits of preserving the resource, taking into consideration the purpose described in the previous slide, and any proposed mitigation for the demolition. And in this case, the applicable plans include comprehensive plan, goals, and policies, scenic resources protection plan, Washington Park master plan, and the Washington Park reservoirs historic district national register nomination. Here is a zoning map of the site. For posting purposes, we posted the entire site outlined in red, but the project area is to the northeast of the site in that circle. It's primarily zoned open space, and there are environmental conservation, environmental protection, and scenic resource overlay zones. And again, it is the Washington Park reservoirs historic district, which is sort of dashed outline where it says project area. Here's an aerial view of the district over on the left side, just in context with the city. Here's a closer view of the district. So we are here to discuss demolition of three contributing resources. They include reservoir three, reservoir four, and the Ware Building, which is located just east of the gatehouse at reservoir three. Reservoirs three and four were constructed in 1894, and the Ware Building was constructed in 1946, and they were listed in the National Register under criteria A and C, which is association with events that made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history, and embodiment of the distinctive characteristics of a type period or method of construction. Here's some site photos, just to get a sense of the area. On the right there, that is reservoir four, looking north to the dam at reservoir three. And on the left is a view of the hillside just west of reservoir four that was discussed in the staff report extensively. And then below that is a view across reservoir four, looking east. On the upper left, that is a picture of the pump house one. Below that, reservoir three, and then on the right, gatehouse three and dam three, and then also one of the urns that is on the site. Pump house one, gatehouse three, dam three, and the urns are proposed for preservation This shows the extent of the demolition that we're talking about. The square is the Ware Building, and then the red outline shows the extent of the demolition. It would be all of reservoir three basin, all of reservoir four basin, and then the red lines show the extent of the parapet demolition. Part of the existing parapet walls at reservoir four would remain. This is a picture of the proposed redevelopment. The Water Bureau is proposing to construct a new buried reservoir partially beneath cascading reflecting pool at reservoir three. That reflecting pool would occupy basically the existing footprint of reservoir three. Also, a smaller reflecting pool at reservoir four. Preservation work on dams, gatehouses, and other structures, and widening of paths, incorporation of new lighting, and introduction of an interpretation program. The applicant responds to the approval criteria. The applicant requested that city council weigh certain goals and policies more heavily, and those are public facilities and water service as provision of water, which is an essential public service, it's one of the principal roles of government. They also noted retaining the existing historic resources in place will leave water services, downhill populations, and the existing structures at risk due to landslide pressures and seismic inadequacy. Water Bureau has acknowledged that the preservation of the remaining structures, restoration of public access, and the provision of an interpretation program are necessary aspects of the redevelopment proposal in order to satisfy the demolition review approval criteria. So staff findings, apologize for the wordiness, this is a lengthy report, and this tries to distill it. I found that the historic significance of the Washington Park reservoirs and their impact on the development of our city is without question. However, the structural integrity of the reservoirs has been compromised since they were first constructed due to the excavation of the adjacent hillside, including the toe of the ancient landslide. The existing historic resources face continued landslide pressures, seismic vulnerability, and issues due to their age. In addition, EPA LT2 rule has charged all communities with open reservoirs to cover or treat their drinking water at the point of discharge. That is why they are proposing a solution now rather than at some point later. Preservation of the existing historic resources in place would not be practical, as the landslide would continue to exert its pressure on the reservoirs, resulting in continued deterioration. The proposed redevelopment includes significant restoration work for the structures and character-defining elements to remain, increased public access throughout the site, and an interpretation program that will tell the story of the Washington Park reservoirs and the Bull Run Water System. And despite the loss of historic basins in the Ware Building, on balance, I found that the proposal will have a significant public benefit. So in summary, I found that goals 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11 were met. Goal 12 was met and also non-met, but when considered against the other goals, I found that, on balance, this goal was met. Goals 4, 5, and 10, I found were not applicable. So on balance, I feel that the comprehensive plan goals and policies are met. Historic Landmarks Commission voted three to one to support the staff recommendation. Commissioners in favor noted that Water Bureau has followed the advice they were given over the course of four meetings, and significant preservation work is proposed. One dissenting commissioner opposed.
Keep going, please.
Questioned the necessity of the project and believed that the Water Bureau did not meet its burden in demonstrating the approval criteria were met. Two members of the commission are here, one to speak on each side, so they can elaborate. As of yesterday, I received 37 items of testimony. Most of them were opposed, five in support, six noted concerns, mostly regarding traffic and construction. The nature of the opposition's comments mostly questioned the validity of Portland Water Bureau's argument that this was a necessary project, questioned the landslide and earthquake arguments, as well as LT2 regulations. And the nature of the supporters' comments noted appreciation for the proposed redevelopment and the preservation work. So your options are to approve the proposal, approve the proposal with conditions, or deny the proposal. That's it.
Thank you very much. Questions for Ms. Adam? Maybe more later? Thank you very much for now. Let's move on to the applicant's presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and commissioners. I'm Teresa Elliott, Principal Engineer with Portland Water Bureau in charge of the Washington Park project. Presenting with me today are Mary Lee Hanks, is Mary Lee Hanks, Lead Designer for the Visible Features. In the audience are several Water Bureau staff and consultants to help answer technical questions. We met with Historic Landmarks Commission several times, culminating with the hearing on March 30th with their recommendation to approve the land use application. In addition, you have a memo from me that addresses some of the issues that were raised during that hearing, and a detailed communication report summarizing the public outreach that we've done to date. Mary Lee will now highlight the application and give you a sense of what the development will look like, and we'll discuss the public outreach in more detail.
Thanks, Teresa. Good afternoon. So as we've heard, we're here today to talk about the Type IV historic resource demolition review. My name is Mary Lee Hanks, landscape architect with AECOM. So we understand that the demolition decision will be based on the balancing of applicable policies of the Portland Comprehensive Plan. And as part of this balancing process, we also understand that you will consider the overall design proposal and its merits on the one hand, and the demolition on the other. In order to support your review of this request, we will focus our presentation today on four main items. main items. The first is the project driver, so why the project is necessary. The second is public involvement process, then the proposed actions related to the contributing resources within the historic district and then finally, how the project design is supportive of the Comprehensive Plan goals and policies. The Washington Park Historic Reservoir District is east of the Rose Garden and surrounded by the Arlington Heights and Goose Hollow neighborhoods. As another point of reference, Washington Park reservoirs is about 250 feet higher in elevation than where we're sitting here today. Within the district, there are 11 contributing resources, which are all noted on the slides. I'm not going to go through those point by point, it would take a long time. But we're here today to request your support for the demolition of three contributing resources, including reservoir three and four basins and the Weir Building. So we're proposing that the reservoir three basin be removed to build a new buried drinking water reservoir, that the reservoir four basin will be partially buried and removed in order to meet the stormwater and reservoir overflow requirements and that the Weir Building will be removed in order to allow adequate protection of gatehouse three during construction of the buried drinking water reservoir. The remaining contributing resources will all be preserved and rehabilitated to varying degrees. And I think it's also important here to note that we've received a letter from SHPO, a preliminary letter that states, and that's the State Historic Preservation Office, stating that the proposed demolition should not, doesn't look like it will impact the designation of the district as a historic district.
They opined that it would not.
It would not.
All right, thank you.
Now, the next section I'd like to review with you is the project drivers and we have four of those that I'll discuss. The first is the historic landslide. So any design work that we undertake as part of this project needs to accommodate an active landslide. This landslide was triggered during the original construction during 1984, sorry, 1894, as you can see in the image there. This next slide is more of a diagram, just to depict the overall size of that historic landslide. And as you can see, the toe of that landslide extends all the way into the existing reservoir three and four basins. Our second project driver is seismic susceptibility. And now that regional seismicity is better understood, we know that the reservoir is threatened to collapse in a major earthquake. This timeline shows eight and nine magnitude earthquakes and their reoccurrence in the Cascadia Subduction Zone that go as far back as 2000 B.C. And at a quick glance, you can see that we really need to be prepared for more.
Mary Lee?
Yes?
I just note that Jill Lepore had a piece in The New Yorker recently that suggested that the Magna Carta really wasn't that big a deal.
Oh, okay, I'll go ahead and take that off that slide next. Now, our third project driver, or sorry, our third project driver is safe drinking water and today's regulations require that we have safe drinking water quality. So our, finally, our fourth driver is aging infrastructure. And many of the structures at the Washington Park reservoir were built around 1894, as we've talked about, and those were designed to last anywhere from 75 to 100 years and now they're about 120 years old. Now, this is an image of the Bull Run pipes when they were installed and most of the pipes and the infrastructure at the Washington Park reservoirs were built at that same time and they are original. I'm going to touch on the public involvement process and this was set up just intended to give you a brief overview of that process, although we also have a larger document that describes it in more detail. This is our public involvement schedule. We initiated the process in early 2013 before we even started design and each of the dots or the rectangle on the schedule indicate a time, a point in time when we met with the various groups. Through this process, we received broad support for the project design proposal during those meetings. We've specifically received letters of support from the HLC, our Sounding Board and the AIA Historic Resources Committee. I also wanted to mention that we have mailed more than 20,000 postcards about the project. We've sent 2,000 emails and placed more than 1,500 postings and flyers around the neighborhoods and areas in the park. Now, this section of our presentation focuses on our design proposal and is intended to help illustrate how our proposal supports the Comprehensive Plan goals and policies. The mission of the Portland Water Bureau is to ensure that the city has continuous, safe and reliable drinking water. The design proposal includes a buried reservoir that is under, basically below that upper reflecting pool. And then the design proposal also includes the two reflecting pools in a similar location as the existing open water reservoirs. The proposal, in addition, the proposal includes a lowland habitat and grassy stormwater swale area adjacent to that lower reflecting pool. And what you can't quite tell from this image, but there is quite a lot of land mass regrading that we're doing at the lower reservoir in order to help mitigate that slide that continues to move. In the following series of slides, I'm going to share a number of photos of the site in their current condition. I'm going to follow up that with, follow those up with a series of simulations of the design proposal. So this photo is of gatehouse three and the Weir Building, which was built in 1946, much later than the original construction. We're proposing that the Weir Building be demolished in order to protect gatehouse three, which sits behind it during that construction. Now, this is a simulation taken from a similar point of view and shows what that space would look like with the Weir Building demolished. A new buried drinking water reservoir will be built underneath the upper portion of that reflecting pool that you see there and it roughly, the form of it follows the curvature of the upper cascade. And we want to keep it at that higher level. By keeping it at the current operation level for the drinking water reservoir, we're able to continue to make sure that we can use the energy efficient, gravity fed water storage and distribution system that's in place at Washington Park reservoirs right now. Now, this is an existing view from the grand stairway. And this is a visual simulation looking at that same point, standing from that same spot. Through our extensive public involvement process, we have a design proposal for a reflecting pool that will look very similar to the existing condition, but that will now be more, much more accessible to the public since the water will no longer be drinking water. Now, this is an existing photo looking down at reservoir four from standing at the edge of dam three. In this simulation, you'll notice the restored and regraded hillside that's on the right side of that image and extends all the way into the existing reservoir four basin. At this location, we have accommodated several functional requirements for the facility, including the reservoir overflow and then also the stormwater components required for the project. Based on the historic landmarks feedback, we've also included a smaller reflecting pool and dam and below gate, below, sorry, a small reflecting pool adjacent to those features next to the dam and the gatehouse in order to better relate future conditions to the historic conditions and the current conditions. And then finally, I wanted to share with you this simulation, just to demonstrate what the proposal would look like at dusk. And this is a view that very few people have seen since the 1970s due to the access restriction related to water supply. The historic light poles that you see in this image will be rehabilitated and relit and new lighting will be added at the pump station and the dam and both dams to accentuate the rehabilitated historic resources that are really just a beautiful Romanesque architecture. Now, the final section, I wanted to wrap up our presentation with a summary of why the demolition of the two reservoir basins and the Weir Building, when considered in context with the design proposal, support the applicable Comprehensive Plan goals and policies. BDS staff and the Portland Water Bureau agree on the applicable Comprehensive Plan goals and policies that must be considered. Our application for historic demolition review covers these in great detail, but I would like to specifically highlight how the design proposal is supportive of three of those goals and those are the ones that were mentioned before that we feel should be weighed more heavily. Goal three, neighborhoods, is the first. The design concept resulted from an extensive public engagement process that included neighborhood association representatives. Neighbors will now have the benefit from restored access to the new reflecting pools and restored historic structures.
I'll allow you some additional time, but I'll do the same for a principal opponent if there is one. So try to wrap up though, please.
Goal 11E is the water service. The provision of a safe and reliable drinking water system is an essential city service. And then finally, goal number 12, urban design. The design concept provides for accessible, well-designed reflecting pools and historic rehabilitation of reservoir dams and gatehouses, parapet walls, wrought iron fencing and the lamp posts. The design concept incorporates the results of three Historic Landmarks Commission Design Advice Reviews, the Oregon Chapter of the American Institute of Architects Historic Resource Committee. Removal of the Weir Building will open views up of that restored rehabilitated gatehouse three. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? The applicant team. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now begin the public testimony phase and allow individuals who are here to speak in favor of the application and who've signed up or who do while we're underway here to speak. Let me lay down some ground rules for public testimony for those of you that may not have been here before. This is a room where everyone gets heard and no one gets intimidated. So we ask that we maintain decorum in this chamber at all times. If you agree with someone, you're certainly free to give them a thumbs up or a wave of the hand, but we ask that people not make vocal demonstrations in favor or against their fellow citizens' opinions in this room. Secondly, this is a slightly more formal proceeding than some of what we do in this chamber because we're making a decision under state law and it's very prescribed how quasi judicial land use cases are conducted. So we never allow disruptions in this chamber and if there are any in this case, we'll adjourn immediately because we're not going to break state law in order for someone to conduct any sort of violation of those rules. If you violate those rules, you'll be escorted out of the chamber. So that's how it works. We look forward to a complete and civil discussion and let's turn it over to our counsel clerk for the first three people that want to speak in favor of the application.
A total of seven supporters. The first three, please come on up, are Jessica Engman, Harris Materazzo and Terri Davis.
Good afternoon. Come on up.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Engman. I'm the Vice Chair of the Portland Historic Landmarks Commission and with me today is Commissioner Harris Materazzo. I wanted to be here in person to deliver our commission's recommendation to you and to be a resource for any questions that you might have. As you've already heard, we voted three to one in March to recommend approval of this. The majority of commissioners felt that the staff report was right on and that in, on balance, the structural and site improvements, the restoration of the resources remaining, the increased public access were all tremendous public benefits and therefore that the application was worthy of approval. Certainly, you know from when we've been here before that we take demolition requests very seriously at the Landmarks Commission, given that our charter and mission is to protect Portland's historic resources. But you've also heard that we've had quite a lengthy public process. We've heard from the applicant on numerous occasions and I will say that certainly, at least from the majority of commissioners who are recommending approval, we've felt that the applicant has been very much responsive to our feedback. Early on, we stated that this site really needed a holistic approach and that in order for us to get comfortable with the demolition, that we were going to need to see mitigation, that we were going to need to see the remaining historic resources celebrated and really cared for. And I think that they've very much responded to those requests with the public access, the restoration of the lighting, the fencing, the interpretation. So I think those are sort of the highlights. You've heard about our process and again, the majority of commissioners were in favor. Harris is here to represent the dissenting opinion and he's going to share some of his thoughts.
So before he comes on?
Yep.
We have your letter of April 13th?
Yes.
2015. So does that summarize all the key points that you want us to be aware of?
It certainly does.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Before, also before you leave or before you turn it over to Harris, how much discussion did you have about any scenario in which the Weir Building was preserved instead of demolished? I mean, I understand that the reservoir part of it, but I'm talking about the buildings now.
Sure. That certainly came up. The way the discussion evolved, we understood that the removal of that resource was going to be critical to the access, to be able to do the improvements to the site. The Weir Building, while technically contributing, I would say it is perhaps marginally so in terms that it does not have the level of historic character that the other outbuildings and such have on the site and that we felt, again, based on the other enhancements, improvements and restoration work, that if the Weir Building needed to be removed in order for them to feasibly do this project, that we could get behind that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. My name is Harris Materazzo and I appreciate the opportunity to address the city council today. As Jessica mentioned, I am a commissioner on the Historic Landmarks Commission and was the only one of the four reviewing commissioners to oppose the applicant's request. The purpose of my attendance today really is to just fairly briefly summarize why I oppose the applicant's position and to tell you that in my own words, as opposed to the written letter that went out dated the 13th. You should have before you a letter dated the 15th, which is longer than I anticipated initially, but one which sets forth my more detailed views. This is a somewhat difficult situation because as a commissioner, I don't see myself as an advocate so much as somebody who just needs to explain his position. And in that sense, it's a little bit different than I would be normally as a regular witness here. I would note initially that split decisions are pretty unusual for our, or at least they're not typical for our commission and given this difference, if nothing else, I think ideally, our testimony here today would help promote a discussion about the value of our historic resources and especially the needs of those that are publicly owned and maintained, as well as the action necessary for their ongoing protection. The issue before you, as least as I understand it, is the Portland Water Bureau, the applicant, whether or not it's met its burden to justify the demolition of the Washington Park reservoirs three and four and is not frankly, the consideration of what will replace them. I think that was made earlier, but a large part of, I think what you're going to hear is about the beauty of the replacement. I'll agree, it's a very nice replacement, but it's really not to the heart of the matter and that is, has the applicant met its burden? In my April 17th letter to the council, I described again why I believe the applicant should not prevail. The Bureau of Development Services has described reservoirs, the reservoirs as without question among the city of Portland's most significant historic resources. In my opinion, given that the applicant has the proven capacity to meet the water needs of our city without use of the site, that the reservoirs are among Portland's most historic resources and that the proposal seeks to reinstall a vessel within a known and active landslide zone, as well as an established seismic area, in my opinion, the applicant did not meet the burden to substantiate the need for demolition. I've often said in commission hearings and I truly believe that the most effective government is government that leads by example and as a commissioner, it's difficult at times for me to rationalize supporting the demolition of a, or it would be difficult for me to rationalize supporting the demolition of a significant public resource while by city code, we as a commission sometimes have to deny the historic homeowners' request for a minor exterior residential modification. And so doing, I think essentially, we're setting a double standard and it's implied and that compromises both the value of the, compromises the value of our public and privately held historic resources. I am aware of this, of the holding this council made in the demolition review of the Kirnen Building. It provides you with substantial discretion in establishing how to balance applicable comprehensive goals and policies when considering the demolition of a historic resource. As this council knows, although this standard is different from the one we used, it does not mean that review is completely subjective and without guidelines. It is a weighing process. Again, given that the historic resource is one of Portland's most significant and for the reasons stated earlier, demolition could not be substantiated in my view. Instead, if needed, a more modern vessel could be constructed in a less problematic location. The existing resource could then be taken offline, restored as an aesthetic destination and the bowl reduced in depth to only a few feet. Factually, the Kirnen Building demolition review is distinguishable from the case now presented. At that time, you considered the case, the Kirnen Building had been significantly modified over many years and had almost none of its historic character. It was also in substantial structural disrepair, having lost virtually all of its historic integrity. This is very different from the reservoirs under consideration today, which are essentially still fully functional. Finally, in the not too distant past, as I entered this building, I recalled that City Hall faced possible replacement and the obstacles cited as impediments to its continued functioning included seismic concerns as well as an obsolete and well-worn infrastructure. As I recall, at the time, at least one of your members, Gretchen Gaffory, assisted in spearheading an effort to restore this marvelous structure, which is also one of Portland's most most significant historic resources. In later years, as a private citizen, Commissioner Gaffory gathered a number of us together to save the Simon Benson House, which is now a crown jewel at Portland State University. Under her involvement, or excuse me, until her involvement, the success of that project seemed impossible. Her spirit exemplified the best of who we are with a can-do determination despite the odds that frankly, I find very enviable. Her legacy will be long-lived in this building, Portland State and within our city. Landmarks decisions are merely advisory and the council is not bound by them, although in the minority, I continue to believe that the applicant failed to meet its burden and respectfully disagree with my commission colleagues that demolition of one of Portland's most historic resources should be allowed under these circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to just thank you both for the huge amount of volunteer time that you dedicate to the city as members of the commission. It's a huge service, not often known or appreciated by everyone in the community, but we know and we appreciate it. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Teri Davis and I work for Portland Parks and Recreation as the West Services Zone Manager. Briefly, in my role, I provide support and oversight of all of the developed parks, recreation facilities, and programs that are geographically located on the west side of the Willamette River. And I'm here today to talk about public process in relation to the Water Bureau's Washington Park Reservoir Project. Portland Parks and Recreation not only values, but relies upon the participation, input, and feedback that we consistently receive from the public to ensure that the programs we offer, the parks we develop and maintain, and the facilities we operate are reflective of the communities that we serve. We view these public stakeholders as partners in our shared management and stewardship of our parks and facilities. As other bureaus, organizations, and agencies have assets that are located within our parks, we also work to ensure that any projects or development related to those assets not only meet parks' goals, but also transparently and genuinely include those shared public stakeholders in providing guidance and input into these projects. I've been the representative for our bureau to the public process for this Water Bureau Reservoir Project. This project to date has included extensive public process that closely aligns with our own bureau's goals for outreach and community involvement. The process has included stakeholder interviews, project briefings to neighborhood associations and coalitions, open house events, virtual open house options, tabling at community events, press releases, tours of the Washington Park reservoirs, informational mailers, web-based updates and blogs of the project, and nine community sounding board meetings with time allocated for public input at each meeting. I participated as a member of the community sounding board, along with representatives of the surrounding neighborhood associations and coalitions, and a representative from the Historic Resources Committee. In these meetings, we represented our respective organizations, but we worked together to provide input into the development of the visible features design component of this project. I've participated on many such committees and I can state that this process was very collaborative, respectful, excuse me, respectful of differing views and responsive to the input provided both by the sounding board and through public comment. As the process goes forward, a project manager from our bureau has been assigned to liaise between the Portland Parks and Recreation and the Water Bureau. I appreciate the high level of public involvement that the Water Bureau has taken and I anticipate that this will continue going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for any of these folks? Thank you all very much.
Next three are Eric Nagel, Chris Kent, and Annie Mahoney.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Nagel. I was Arlington Heights Neighborhood Association's representative to the community sounding board that was convened by the Water Bureau, which included representatives from a number of the affected neighborhoods and other interests. We met for a number of sessions over the course of the year. I'd like to commend the Water Bureau for its really extraordinary and extensive public outreach effort. I think every effort was made by the bureau to ensure that anyone with an interest in the project would be heard. I believe the bureau staff and their design team listened to our concerns and that the final project design reflects those concerns. The sounding board, and there's a memo that I'll be providing that I think you may already have from the sounding board, supports the design in almost all respects. We like the cascades concept for Reservoir Three and we like the hybrid design for Reservoir Four, which will combine a reflecting pool with lowland wildlife habitat. I believe the design reflects the historic, respects the historic character of the site. It will leave important historic structures intact while making the reservoir site a much more beautiful and welcoming place for Portlanders and visitors alike. The one reservation that I believe many of us on the sounding board had about the design concerned the new fence around Reservoir Three. Most of us agreed that it would mar the visual appeal of the site. There's no longer a need for a fence since it won't be a drinking water reservoir, it'll only be a foot deep. The Water Bureau cited safety concerns as the reason for the fence, but given how shallow the reflecting pool will be, that just doesn't seem justified. So, the sounding board urges that if there must be a fence, it should at least be as low as possible. I want to say that as for the actual construction process, we do have a few suggestions, Arlington Heights does. Arlington Heights will be affected by this construction project more than any other neighborhood in the city. Heavy trucks will travel neighborhood streets every four to five minutes every day for years. This will be on top of the literally thousands of truck trips that will be generated by that.
Eric, I have to stop you there because you have to stick with the design criteria and not with what will be considered in the Type III review.
Okay, I understand. That's all I have then.
Okay, so you raised this issue of the fence during the Landmarks Commission, I'm sorry, the, yeah, Landmarks Commission discussion as well? I know you did in the sounding board process, but...
You know, honestly, Mayor, I don't recall whether we brought that up before the Landmarks Commission.
All right, thank you. Glad you raised it here, thank you.
There will certainly be an opportunity to discuss it again in the design project. This is the first I've heard of this. I'm wondering though if it's similar to the problem that we have in parks with the waiting pools not being allowed anymore? There's a state regulation that we had to drain all the waiting pools, so it's possible that they may have to have a fence.
Well, one question we had is why we have so many other pools around the city, like for example Keller Fountain, which have no fences around them?
Yeah, that doesn't have much of a pool at all, though it's more of a fountain than a pool.
No, it's a good question and I'm glad you raised it. It may not be germane to the Landmarks review, but it might be to the ultimate design of the project if it goes forward, but...
It seems like an unnecessary expense.
Yeah. Would you prefer none at all?
None at all, yes.
Okay, interesting, thank you. Okay?
Thanks for the comments you made about the Water Bureau process. I know that Arlington Heights has not always been pleased with public process involving city efforts and to call out a positive feature is just as important as holding our feet to the fire, so thank you for that.
Would you like to be next? Please.
Good afternoon, excuse me, my name is Annie Mahoney. I'm sorry, I'm a little under the weather, so I apologize for my voice. I am a licensed architect in Portland and practicing and work on historic preservation projects. I was part of the sounding board along with Mr. Kent, Mr. Nagel, and I am in support of the proposed work at Washington Park's reservoir. As a member of the sounding board, my fellow board members and I met with the design team at public meetings nine times over the course of design. I personally came to the board as a practicing architect with experience working on historic preservation projects. We did ask questions initially about the choice of eradicating the reservoirs altogether or whether there was another site, but our task was clearly to talk about the visible design features of the project. The overwhelming direction from the board was to preserve as much as possible of the existing features. We also requested that interpretive programming be included in the design to talk about the history of the reservoirs in Portland and water conservation. I believe the Portland Water Bureau and the design team have listened and responded to the board and public comments while balancing issues of cost and constructability and are meeting the applicable goals stated in the comprehensive plan, including but not limited to goal number three, neighborhood. This will create a destination for those living in the neighborhood and the city at wide. Transportation, goal number six, this will provide access to this area for people using wheelchairs and who are differently able. Environment, given the landslide and seismic concerns, this is a matter of public safety. Removal of the basins is the responsible and right thing to do. Goal nine, citizen involvement. The team engaged stakeholders, both local and citywide, at public meetings and open houses. I personally represented the viewpoint of historic preservation. The design team listened and responded to us at every step. Goal 11, public facilities. It will increase public safety and enhance the park experience, providing a backdrop for a piece of Portland's history that is very important. Most importantly, goal 12, urban design. To visit Washington Park is to experience surprise and discovery. At every turn might be a hidden glen, a view of Mount Hood or the Rose Garden. Washington Park encompasses and provides many different types of experiences except for a significant water feature. The reservoir project will provide a unique experience that has been unavailable for decades. If the Water Bureau is not allowed to proceed with this work, what will become of these unique and vital elements of our history? Without the reservoir work, there will be no impetus for any restoration of these important structures and they will fall further into disrepair. An opportunity will be lost for the preservation of one of our greatest assets. Even though the demolition of any historic structure is not preferred and should be avoided, it shouldn't be avoided at all costs. On balance, it is affording the city an opportunity to create a safer utility and amenity that is accessible to all citizens and an enhanced resource for the history and culture of our city. This project will be a significant benefit to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Chris Kent. I'm a property and business owner in Goose Hollow area, right downhill from a potential eruption of these reservoirs if this seismic event that everybody says is going to happen happens before we get on the ball and fix this problem. I was on the community sounding board with Annie and Eric and you've heard a lot of comments about that. I'll just say flat out, I came to that board a little bit of a skeptic and a lot of a Grinch, thinking that something could be wired or jerry-rigged or whatever. I'm very confident that that process was very fair, one of the fairest I've ever seen. We, as Eric mentioned, we had different opinions on things, we had lots of input, lots of different concepts were thrown around. Eight members, nine meetings, a ton of community outreach. I'm confident that we all got our input into this design. And it was, aside from Eric's comments, a unanimous decision of all of these different people from different walks of life about what should be done up there. So, that's a process comment. And I would say too, that the next category is cost, okay? I came to it really watching nickels and dimes because candidly speaking, we've all seen fiascos of the Water Bureau before and I was a little bit wondering whether this was another one in the making. But I'm confident, having looked at numbers all my life and being criticized by my friends of being too focused on numbers, that this is a good investment. The cost differential from putting something up there iconic versus just putting grass and mowing the grass is measured in terms of a few million dollars over the course of 150, 200 years or whatever the life expectancy is of the project. So, I know you add up a few million here and a few million there and you got a lot of money, but over the next century and a half, or two centuries potentially, it's not a lot of money. The geotech issues, I think you've heard a lot about that. It's landslide, we've got all these seismic issues, it's on this hill, this thing is going to crack sooner or later and it's going to be a cascade of water coming down off of Washington Park, so it needs to be fixed. The final thing that I would comment on is the design issue. Again, I'm not artsy. I look at things more practically speaking, but you know, if Washington, if Pioneer Place is Portland's living room, Washington Park is certainly its balcony. We have, this is a scene that is seen in countless photographs around the world from Washington Park at various angles with photographs and views to the city and Mount Hood. It gets a lot of traffic, it's a huge crossroad for tourism and just our identity. I think it's our chance to do something iconic that will last for a few generations in a very cost-effective manner, clean up a safety problem and I would urge that the demolition be approved so we can get on with this and build something for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Thank you all. Okay, next three.
That's all from the support list.
Okay, and now is there someone signed up as a principal opponent or are there folks who signed up in opposition? Is there, is there an organization that opposes the project? Sounds like not. So, individual opponents then, three minutes each.
How many, Carl? We have 14 on the oppose. The first three, please come on up, are Mary Eng, Ben Pickering, and Scott Fernandez.
Good afternoon, Portland City Council. I'd like to refresh our memories collectively. If anyone was in the room last Wednesday, a week ago from last Wednesday, there was an activist called Jonah who went under the billing Charles Johnson. Evidently, he had borrowed a speaking slot and he pulled...
I'm sorry, we're here to talk about this hearing today, Mary. So, you, this is, let me interrupt you for a second, I won't use your time. This is a land use hearing.
Land use, are you talking about radon?
No.
No.
Hang on, so...
Wheelbarrows?
Let me finish, please, this is important for others to know.
Chuck Schumer, New York?
Mary, let me finish.
EPA?
No, none of the above, okay? So, this is a historic...
Privatization?
Nope.
Washington Park?
Yes.
Roses?
No.
Water?
Would you let me finish?
Would you let me finish?
No, I'm actually holding your time until I can give you instructions because we can't break state law here, even if you want to.
Absolutely, okay, help me.
Okay, so, here's the deal, you have to concentrate on the criteria that apply to a historic landmarks case, in this case, a demolition.
The flashy PDF.
That's all you get to talk about.
The flashy PDF, the gorgeous, luminous, reflective pool.
All right, I'm going to let you start and hope that you heard me. You have to stick to the criteria and to this case.
The burden of proof has not been met. The concerns for human health are enormous. The elephant in the room is human health. We often have elephants in the room here, so we don't bring them up. What are the materials? Have they been thoroughly investigated, the materials that are containing this water? The issues with the Missoula floods, the runoff of radioactive water thousands of years ago into our watershed are not being met. We're not assessing the potential, Merkley said, "You guys are throwing him out of the game" and you're just kind of, it's a runaway carriage, it's a fiefdom. And it looks like a backdoor to privatization supposedly and I have to say, like, as an artsy person, I find the PDF lovely. I think it's beautiful, it looks kind of neo-Greco-Roman, it's kind of jazzy, shimmering, but I'm not convinced scientifically that this is the best option. And I'm really concerned about the landslides in the Pacific Northwest generally. I think those are valid concerns and that the seismic irregularities in the buildings generally should be overhauled, but what I'm seeing with the water crisis on a large scale, the EPA appears to be a bureaucracy that has strained from its original founding principles to protect the environment and if this is about packing away more cash with your friends in wheelbarrows like our famous little governor, it seems that we're not having any kind of vetting of what are the vested interests, what is the long-term, 100-year future? 100 years from now, will somebody be sitting here saying, "What were those petroleum, Salzman Petroleum Hales Coal Petroleum Novick commissioners doing with our water?"
Mary, thank you. Okay, same plan.
Basically, I didn't know what I was signing up that much for, other than I just want to say is, we have nothing to lose but the gang. I'm all for that, that's cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
I'm Scott Fernandez. In 2004, the independent review panel reviewed the seismic and landslide issues and determined that they were a non-issue and voted at that time to retain the open reservoirs. EPA LT2 was a distinct part of this discussion and I wish we could talk more about that, but I will limit it to the Washington Park landslides initially. The Washington Park landslides were stabilized in the early years after the reservoir construction started and that photograph that we saw with the landslide goes back almost 120 years. But after the reservoir construction, first by utilizing pumps to draw down the water table, followed by digging along the slip surface of the landslide to provide a network of interconnecting, de-watering tunnels, along with gravity drains. Being stabilized for decades... table, followed by digging along the slip surface of the landslide to provide a network of interconnecting, de-watering tunnels, along with gravity drains. Being stabilized for decades today, the landslide creeps only at a fraction of an inch a year. It is not the catastrophic situation the Portland Water Bureau wants us to believe exists. The underground water mitigation programs have worked as they were designed, continuing to impede the soil movement. The soils near Washington Park reservoirs withstood intense rain inundation from the 1964 Christmas storm. But more importantly, the state of Oregon recognized the February 1996 once-in-a-lifetime 100-year superstorm event as a milestone. With intense raining lasting for many days, all without landslide issues at Washington Park, the surrounding reservoir soils and landscape survived the ultimate rainfall challenge and remain that way today. As far as the covered reservoir that will be placed in, that will supposedly be placed in the Reservoir 3, the open reservoirs have a long history of protecting us from Columbia South Shore wellfield radon for many years. That protection will go away in a covered reservoir system, exposing children, families, vegetable gardens, microbrew industries to radioactive radon and radioactive decay products from the covered reservoirs. Climate change, as we see coming from NOAA, is forcing us to use, and will force us to use more Columbia South Shore wellfield as a secondary source, as we have less precipitation in the Northwest. Because LT2 has been defective in its science and methodology, we can keep the open reservoirs. And how will council justify and explain that you have knowingly and willfully subjected citizens to radioactive radon that EPA confirms is no safe level? We need to stop the Washington Park and Mount Tabor reservoir open demolition and destruction now, begin an EPA LT2 total system waiver process, and engage with a congressional delegation along with the state of Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, next.
Our Dee White, Michael Wallace, and Michael Conley.
Welcome. Good afternoon.
Hi.
I'd like to go first.
I'll go first. I'm Dee White. I'm at 3836 Southeast 49th Avenue, Portland, Oregon. Zoning code, the zoning code approval criteria on page six references the historic land, I'm sorry, the Historic Resource Review Section 33.445.330, titled "Demolition of Historic Reservoirs, Resources in a Historic District." This reads, "Demolition of other historic resources within a historic district requires demolition review to ensure their historic value is considered. The review period also ensures that there is an opportunity for the community to fully consider the alternatives to demolition. This opportunity for the community has never taken place. The Water Bureau made the decision to demolish the reservoirs behind closed doors. The public was never given any meaningful opportunity to consider alternatives to demolition." In 2003, the city created the Mount Tabor Independent Review Panel for the purpose of reviewing the options for meeting the LT2 rule and keeping the reservoirs secure. It was created in response to the massive amount of criticism for the lack of public participation in the decision to bury the reservoirs. I attached the majority report from this panel's findings, and with my documentation today, Dave Mazza wrote it. It was in the Portland Alliance, and I have attached that for y'all to read again. So essentially, the panel found that, the final vote was against burying the reservoirs after this independent review. So essentially, once all the facts were brought to light, much of it by the public, and presented to the independent panel, the panel voted not to move forward with the burial. This, of course, did not please the city and the Water Bureau, and this is exactly what the Water Bureau and the city want to avoid with this proposal now, to demolish the reservoirs at Washington Park. Cover and treat has been, or do nothing, has been pushed aside behind closed doors. The goal of citizen involvement for the demolition decision, including considerations of the alternatives, has not been met. So all this public process that people, that the BDS and parks are talking about, it's public process for what's going to happen after you demolish. The public process has not taken place to consider the alternatives to this demolition. And that's, that is critical. It's the rule. It's the law. It's what y'all make us follow. So the goal, this application for demolition, y'all should reject it until a meaningful public process has taken place. And a good place to start would be to have another independent panel consider all of the alternatives that could delay demolition and finally preserve our historic reservoirs. Congressman Salzman, you've been on the city council for longer than anyone. You've got more standing. You've got more clout. I just implore you to please start another panel so we can consider all of these alternatives.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Michael Wallace. I live at 3213 Southwest Upper Cascade Drive, which is above the reservoirs. I'm concerned about three issues related to the proposed demolition. First, the chance of a landslide has been overstated, and the quantifiable seismic evidence clearly shows that even in the face of massive rain and snowfall, landslides are not a problem. Second, the current reservoirs with proper maintenance can serve Portland residents for at least another 35 years. And third, the increased traffic that will result from the proposed demolition has not been adequately addressed or mitigated. The closure of Sacagawea Circle-
Yeah, I know. That's-
Am I off out of bounds here?
Yeah, we can't do the traffic issue.
Okay, then I thank you very much for hearing-
Yeah, and the reason for that, of course, is that this is essentially backward-looking at the historic resource, not ahead at the construction project. I understand people are concerned about that, but that's out of the bounds of this review.
Okay.
And there will be another opportunity.
This is a historic review. Whoever said that, this is a historic review, and we've got to stick to the criteria.
It will be a Type 3 proceeding that deals with those issues and a chance to be heard.
Yeah. Thank you.
Or the demolition permit is granted, correct?
Right. Okay, welcome.
Good afternoon, city council. I'm Michael Conley. And I was, Tuesday night, I was at my Concordia Neighborhood Association meeting, and we had a voice vote about whether I could bring this up. We were opposed to the, in Concordia, we're opposed to the demolition due to the viability of the existing structures as they are. And there is, we do believe that they are viable and needed. I found that the amenities proposed are very nice, but nobody has really brought up the cost, except one gentleman. And he really downplayed the numbers as a few million, and this is another huge liability to the citizens and ratepayers. We, like, I was really behind the big pipe. That was great infrastructure to keep pollution out of our river. But this is another thing that is just, I believe, unnecessary and also very hastily proposed. Maybe people in this neighborhood have heard about it, the process, but I didn't get any anything in my bill statement or any communication from the Water Bureau about this. I found out about it on the Internet, and I came down here to do this. I believe that demolition is not the way to go. And also, this project cannot be separated really from the LTE ruling and the city's lack of any response to that, any meaningful opposition to that unfunded mandate from the EPA. So maybe it's a little bit out of the scope of this hearing, but I believe that we can't really ignore that. So, you know, as far as you want to talk about your fence for your waiting pool and all that, as if it's fait accompli, I don't, I don't believe that. I think we need to put the brakes on this project and keep our reservoirs viable. And a couple of the other gentlemen on my side have pointed out that the seismic concerns and the landslide concerns have been overstated by the Water Bureau. And, you know, I love our Portland water, but I find that the Water Bureau has consistently thrown these things out for us. And, you know, my bill has quadrupled in the last couple of decades. And I think we have to speak to that also. That's a huge expense for our city, and I don't know who's going to get the money, but I know that who's going to pay for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could address something, Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
You said about traffic. So that's a little bit downstream, but if anyone, you or anyone who is here who wants to get up-to-date information about public process on traffic, ways of being heard before the Bureau seeks a permit, or want to weigh in, because there's been extensive conversations about how that might play out, if you would just check with my office before you go, we'll make sure you get up-to-date information on that in a timely manner so that you can be heard.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks very much. Okay?
Next three are Rose Marie Up, Dan, I believe the last name is Bergen, and John, I think the last name is Dwork.
Ms. Up, go ahead. Good afternoon.
Hello. My name is Rose Marie Up. I reside at 1339 Southeast 130th.
It's hard to hear you up here.
Yeah, so try to pull that microphone a little closer, if you could. The whole box will slide your way if you pull on it. There you go. That will work. Thank you.
When is my time starting?
After that.
Okay. This is yours to get it in three minutes. But under approval criteria, we're talking protect resources. I think the big resource here is our water. I think the public needs to know that our elected officials have not been good stewards of the most valuable asset that we have in this city, which is our Bull Run water system. And I'm pretty much here today because it relates to our water being degraded. These open reservoirs need to be fully functioning as a vital component of those, of that system.
So, Rose Marie, we need to talk about the demolition criteria. We understand there's-
Because when those reservoirs are demolished, the function of those open reservoirs, which have provided healthy drinking water, will be changed and gone.
That is a-
What got my attention at the Historical Landmarks Commission is that the Water Bureau said there's no change. There's change, all right. We would be allowed, they said, to still keep that Bull Run water in the water ponds, but heavens forbid, cannot even accidentally let that good water come to our homes. No, that's going to have to be drained into sewers. I'm sorry, but this, the elephant in the room here is our water, which is dependent, the healthy water of our community, on the open reservoirs staying as fully functioning. Do you not understand that? When we use the water from the wellfields, which has radon, the open reservoirs allow that radon to dissipate in the air. Now then, we'll have radioactive water coming into our homes, apparently. But let's talk about goal nine. The general public's supposed to know about this. And the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act indicates citizens need to know about change in their water. I'm from East Portland. This isn't just a Tabor and Arlington issue. Stakeholders, all people who drink this Bull Run water, need to be informed. And this, the worst of it is that our council hasn't been a good steward of this public health in my book, because they don't even want to have a discussion on this. They've thrown in the towel on this, which is really unacceptable. The public needs to know that New York, it's very clear that you're not working for us because New York has worked for their community. Senator Schumer went to EPA, communicated this was too great a financial burden for them. They got a reprieve till 2028. Senator Merkley, when I asked him, said he couldn't help because this council hasn't asked him. This is something that we need to understand, and also with the microbrewery industry, this won't be able to be covered up forever. It's going to come out. It's going to harm citizens. You talk about children. This is quite hypocritical when you aren't concerned about the health of our community.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hello. My name is Daniel Berger. I'm a physician specializing in emergency medicine, actively serving the greater Portland community. Thank you so much for listening to public testimony on this important matter. I think there is definitely a significant lack of trust from the public in all these proceedings. As with Mount Tabor Park, the public feels their involvement to discuss the needs or alternatives for these projects has been avoided, allowing us only to engage on the what goes in top conversations. It is not empowering to discuss fences and stuff like that when there's much larger issues at play. Portland Water Bureau administrators have publicly stated, quoted, "Designing and building is glamorous. Maintenance is boring." Well, that may be well untrue, but it's the responsibility that comes with being true stewards of our public resources. In the process, Portland Water Bureau is selling out the soul of our city with overblown projects that are not needed, putting us further into deep, deep debt, spending money we desperately need elsewhere and don't have in the first place, as well as jeopardizing the health of our citizens and our children for generations to come. It is worth pointing out once again that the rush deadline to complete these projects is fabricated by the city. In a letter to the MTNA land use chair, Stephanie Stewart, by Eric Guanicki, Drinking Water Enforcement Coordinator of the EPA, he reiterated that there is no federal deadline to disconnect the reservoirs. The only federal deadline was to submit a plan by April 1, 2009, and that was compiled a long time ago, albeit without public input. The city can submit a new timeline to the OHA containing a more reasonable and community-approved mitigation plan. Also, like Mount Tabor Park, there are significant land ownership issues that are being brushed aside in the haste to get these corporate contracts underway. Both Mount Tabor and Washington Park consist of numerous different lots owned by either Portland Water Bureau, i.e. ratepayers, or Portland Parks and Recreation, i.e. taxpayers. Both projects, more so at Mount Tabor, but definitely true at Washington Park, have public water, Portland Water Bureau during, doing work and building infrastructure on land owned by Portland Parks and Recreations. This will prohibit any future use of these by the parks, yet no transfer of deeds, consolidations, easements, or anything has been obtained or recorded. If Portland Water Bureau ratepayers intend to build a project on loan land owned by city taxpayers, it needs to compensate the public. This has been repeatedly brought to the attention of all parties by Portland Water Bureau's engineering surveyors and the city's own legal counsel, but these facts seem to be ignored. To proceed with either project would seemingly be illegal. In other words, it would be like digging a well on your neighbor's property. This basis alone, the application should be denied until these land use ship and deed issues are resolved. I implore you to please uphold the pledge towards good governance and representing the will of the people and not our corporate contractors. I beg you to fight tooth and nail to delay these projects. They are not needed.
Thank you. Hey, folks. Hey, hey. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, remember the rules? Thanks.
Yes, I remember the rules.
The rules are, we live-
I think I was ordered.
Thumbs up is fine. Clapping's not.
Okay. I just wanted to note that two years ago, I, when I was briefly Water Commissioner, asked the Oregon Health Authority if they would extend the schedule, give us an extension as Rochester, New York, had gotten one from the state of New York, and they said no.
Well, ask again.
Well, they-
Okay, I have to ask you both to stand down because this is an interesting topic, but we got to stick to the criteria. You've given us an issue or two here that we have to ask about.
When can we discuss these important, critical matters?
I'm sorry?
When can we discuss these important, critical, public issue matters?
I don't know, but this is a historic landmarks and demolition case, so we got to stick to the criteria. You've raised some issues here, like land ownership and deeds and easements, that I want to ask questions about, so I appreciate your testimony on those issues because those are germane. We got to be very careful how we do this because we're required to be.
Matt, please just answer one thing.
Offline elsewhere, please.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time on this matter. I very-
Thank you both. Okay, next three, please.
Was there a John on Ash Street before I move on?
I yield my time.
Pardon?
He yields, he's-
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Then we'll go with Floyd Jones, Charles Johnson, and John Zarnecki.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Yes. Good afternoon. I'm representing Friends of the Reservoirs. That is the organization that placed these reservoirs at Washington Park on the National Register of Historic Places. The reason why we're here, having this hearing, just as we did with the Mount Tabor reservoirs. I submitted nine pages today, speaking directly to the criteria. As has been stated by many people, the Water Bureau hasn't met the criteria for demolition. It's only in an Orwellian world of doublespeak can the Water Bureau suggest that they have considered the value of the- considered the value of the open reservoirs. Why is it that in presenting to the Historic Landmark Commission, or BDS, they failed to provide them with the 70-page report, the historic structures, Washington Park Historic Structures Report, Reservoirs Three and Four, that was prepared in 2010? Why was that?
You're saying that's not in the record? I'm sorry?
Well, I have submitted it to the record, you know, at the last minute, and we've been stakeholders. We've been acknowledged by every commissioner, Mayor Potter, Eric Stan, Dan Salzman, for years. We've not been contacted about this process, so it has not been a good public process. It's been only about what goes on top, what happens after you demolish. But if you read the first page of this report, the reason why, to answer my own question, why is it they didn't present this to the Historic Landmark Commission? Because they want to present the reservoirs as dilapidated. But, you know, what it says is that they were carefully designed and built for durability and low maintenance. Those considerations have allowed the structures to age gracefully. Electronic measuring or pipe controls supplement historic resources instead of replacing them. Concrete finishes on the two gatehouses and structural damage at the pump house have been previously repaired. It goes on and on, but the bottom line in all of this, it says that they are generally in good condition. And as others have stated, you can go through goal by goal, and there's misrepresentations. And, you know, I don't necessarily blame BDS, although who do you have as the applicant for the Water Bureau? A BDS employee, who is brought over to the Water Bureau to work on non-admission projects. So that was set up so that you could have BDS working on both sides to expedite this process, so that we're not addressing alternatives the public has never been able to address, meaningfully address, the many alternatives. The risks from seismic are indeed overstated, and FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Board that addressed the small hydro plant that was at Mount Tabor, they sent a letter to the Water Bureau that was an example of how the Water Bureau overstates risks. That was a much, those are much larger tanks, as you know, you know, 50 million gallons on Reservoir Six, 35 each section. The reservoirs up at Washington Park are very small, and I've submitted many documents to Amanda over the years that show, through our extensive research, dam reports, that if there were an extensive seismic event in Portland, the anticipation was only minor leaking. Well, those are huge reservoirs, so if there were a catastrophic event up at Washington Park, the damage would be limited, given the significant construction techniques that were used in building these reservoirs. So in the nine-page document, I went through goal by goal, and where information was lacking, you know, from the Water Bureau to BDS, and they're absolutely wrong in terms of, I mean, just simple things, even on the little things like access. I mean, I submitted the resolutions to you. Some of you might have been here. Dan, you were here in 2006, where a resolution was brought to council, we're updating the reservoirs. They opened the access to the reservoirs. I was there for the grand celebration. I sent you the press releases. So in addition to the document, I've sent, you know, probably 10 emails over the last few days with documents that support the...
I think those are in the record.
Okay.
Yeah. No, thank you. And I appreciate your written testimony as well. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Good morning. For the record, my name is Charles Johnson, and I would just say that I live in the Commons, but I think we've totally destroyed and obliterated any Commons. Since we're kind of constrained to the issue of land use and this permitting and demolition, I find it ironic that there's been obstruction every time anybody's tried to mention traffic concerns. That's part of demolishing something. Equipment to demolish has to come in, and then...
That's right, but state law doesn't allow us to consider that, because we, under Oregon land use law, don't do individual environmental review on projects. So it's the way we do things in Oregon. It's not our idea here at this dais.
Okay. And when we cut short Commissioner Novick's comments about the Oregon Health Authority, you know, this is a litigious city. We'll sue to not have to tell a federal judge what we're doing on racial justice, so why don't we just tell the Oregon Health Authority to sue us and mobilize the National Guard to come in and make us do what they think we should do with our reservoirs? It's just ridiculous. The reservoir system is functional. It's historic. It shouldn't be tampered with in any way, whether or not we put one-foot or four-foot tall fences around a reflecting pool that, it's just absurd. You should feel, you should be embarrassed, more embarrassed than you were yesterday, when the giant cardboard heads were here.
I wasn't embarrassed. Keep going.
So, thank you, Mayor. So, I just really encourage you to do whatever it takes to send this, to just give up the project. Don't make it go to the court about land use. Don't give us more employment for people in the city attorney's office. Just stop. The water system is fine the way it is. No boogeyman is going to come from Washington or Salem and make us change the water system. If you wanted to be great city commissioners, what you should be looking at is improving the capacity of having more storage of more Bull Run Water in more places around the city, instead of just messing with the perfectly fine system we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zarnicki, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm John Zarnicki. I'm an architect and past chair of the Landmarks Commission.
And Floyd, if you would do him a favor and slide that whole box a little bit...
Oh, certainly.
That way.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I've been thinking about this, obviously, for a long time, but I came here today with a change in mind. Initially, I fully supported this project. Now, I'm modifying my position a little bit, as I think you'll hear. I submit that approving issuance of this permit for demolition runs counter to the intent of approval criterion 2.4, which requires evaluation in light of the Washington Park Historic District. The district nomination states that the most defining principles of reservoirs Three and Four is the open expanse of water 40 feet deep. Because of the great depth and towering firs that surround them, the water is a rich, deep blue. Now, you'll see that I'm really talking about Reservoir Four. Public purpose will be well-served by maintaining integrity of the Washington Park Historic Reservoirs District. Yet that integrity is threatened. Sensitive restoration and preservation of key elements is proposed, yet the central issue of demolishing Reservoir Four remains. This demolition does not set legal precedent. It does set precedence for the perception of value we bring to our publicly-owned historic resources. Improvement of public infrastructure is critical. Sometimes that improvement is surprising and may not be evident. In order to maintain and enhance the character of both reservoirs and the district as a whole, I suggest that the council ask the applicant to return with a scheme for Reservoir Four that enables it to hold water at historic levels. Whether they're buildings, parks, or other public amenities, we should treat historic resources as we would any other resource, directly and as valuable precedent for successful future development. We should understand their extent and qualities, conserve them, and use them wisely to enhance our environment. I ask you to deny the application for demolition of Reservoir Four. Please ensure that this precious resource is worthy of conservation for continued use to enhance the visual and atmospheric character historically intended for this portion of the park. The reflection is not just the wall in the pump house, but the sky and the deep waters, more than a reminder of the past, but a continuity of critical public experience. Thanks for your stewardship and for forward-thinking on behalf of us all. I have a very brief quote from Frederick Law Olmsted. "It is not simply to give the people of the city an opportunity for getting fresh air and exercise. It is not simply to make a place of amusement, or for the gratification of curiosity, or for gaining knowledge. The main object and justification of the park is to produce a certain influence in the minds of people, and through this, to make the life of the city healthier and happier." I don't know if y'all got this handout, but there's three images here of Reservoir Four, and then on the back is a quote from the National Register nomination.
Yeah, we did get that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Thanks very much. Thank you all.
The last person who signed up was Mary Ann Schwab.
Okay. Ms. Schwab, come on up. I saw her. Oh, there she is. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. For the record, my name is Mary Ann Schwab. I serve on the Southeast Uplift Board of Directors, working on the Comp Plan 2035, street fees, housing demolition regulations, and preserving beautiful sequoia trees, 36 inches in diameter. For a few of examples, today I speak to you as a private individual. However, as Southeast Uplift has not taken a stand on this particular issue, today I'm here specifically to address the lack of adequate outreach to the impacted neighborhoods, and to ask you to table this process until a real outreach has been done. Please table this for another seven days, so the public watching this on TV have a chance to write their concerns, pro and con. I want you to know, on Saturday, March 28, my friend and I rang doorbells, talked with homeowners, and hung door hangers on neighbors' front doors. The homeowners we spoke with were surprised to learn 30,000 trucks would be rambling in front of their homes over a four-year period. In addition to the construction challenges, public safety impacts, limited access to site for deliveries and materials removal, worker parking on narrow streets, noise issues, 1,000 pile drivers, truck traffic...
I think you're talking about construction now, not demolition.
I'm talking about public safety as related to the demolition. You can't demolish something without that connectedness. And I'll challenge that law in court if, down in Salem, if I have to. Why were the neighboring homeowners so poorly informed? The BDS public information signs were placed along a busy Burnside Street, hidden by berry vines, one at the entrance of the tennis court. Surely, there would have been better places to place them. More neighbors would have been, read them, and had they been placed near the Max Trimate bus stop, or the path to the Park's water fountain. But really, no one driving east Burnside stops to read a legal posting. These signs came up pretty short of that city that works with red flashing lights. So what might go wrong next? Cement trucks squeezing down heavily parked residential streets where students ride and bicycles come skateboarding around corners. The door hanger attached, I've attached it there, this is what we passed out on people's doors. We cut and paste what was given to us during the, what did they call that crazy meeting? The sounding board.
Soundboard, okay.
The sounding board meeting. We were there in October. I called to get copies of my minutes and my testimony, so I could attach it here. It's not posted online. There's been a hiccup on that one, too. So, I'm going to leave you with one thing. Please, 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 keep this open for seven more days due to the lack of adequate public outreach. I'm requesting that this be tabled. And I want to leave you with a quiet prayer from Native American Indians, Mitchell, Warshaw religious leader. "We have a duty to the land in which we live. We all come from the earth. On death, we return back to the ground. In the cycle of life, everything is born, always is connected with water. Water is the giver of life. We have the best there is on the planet. People out there, check out BullRunRaver.org." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay. Does that cover everyone who signed up to speak?
That's all who signed up.
Anyone else? Okay. Come on up, Mr. Entwistle.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm just wondering, my name is Stephen Entwistle.
I'm a member of Individuals for Justice, and I am a whistleblower for less fortunate folks. The demolition of these reservoirs is not a good idea, and we demand that you don't do this. And for many reasons, as we have just heard tonight, we need to go, we need to stop this. Okay. We need to look at this as a big picture, because it's not going to work. The future's going to look at this, if this goes through, and they're going to say, what a huge mistake those folks did in the past with our entire water system. Do we have, am I a stakeholder in any of this as a private citizen? And if I am, what power do I have when we have quite the majority of folks here that says no to this? Makes me question this whole process in its entirety. There's a lot of good people here that just want to keep their water the way it is. We don't want to foul our water. This is going to foul the water. Forget about the whitewash of all the pretty things you're going to put up there and wheelchair access. I like wheelchair access. I like that. We should have more of that in the forest and everything else with this new design. Okay. But don't foul the water. Don't take this water out. You want to do some improvements up in the park? That's great. We can maintain what we already have. We don't need to destroy anything. Okay? We really don't. And people have testified about that also. So, 30 seconds. As a stakeholder in this decision to consider the destruction, the demolition, demolition of something so vitally necessary and pure as it is, the water is pure now. It won't be when this construction is finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Herschel Soule. I live in northeast Portland. You know, we have global warming is a problem, and to do construction projects that are unnecessary is contributing to the problem. I just want you to know that. I wanted to read something about a comment by a friend, Steve Novick, here. Friends of the Reservoir Public Records request of OHA's documents and communications related to Commissioner Novick's 2013 reservoir deferral request reveal that David...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could you state what that's about again?
Yeah. We were talking about a request for a deferral for this project.
No, no. I'm sorry. This is, you've got to stick to the criteria. You've got to stick to the criteria for demolition.
The criteria for demolition.
Yeah. Other people have done a good job. It's important that we keep that record solid, because no matter which side you are on the issue, we've got to do it the right way. So you got to...
Okay. Well, I'm disappointed a little bit, because the little kids supposedly are here to see democracy in action, and we're not getting to see democracy in action. We're getting to see how the aristocracy gets its way every time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's get the applicant back up for rebuttal, and I also have some questions for the applicant based on testimony. So...
Hello. Mayor Hales, and I'm to the council. I'm Greg Winterode with Winterburg Planning. We helped put the application together. Nice to see you. I have a couple of comments. First is that we agree with the request to keep the record open for seven days.
Yeah, you're a little quiet there. Get Carlo to turn it up. Okay, thank you.
We agree with the request to keep the record open for seven days. There's a lot of new material. We'd like to look at it, make sure we have time to respond in a thoughtful way. The second thing is to clarify the approval criteria. We do need to balance the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and show that the demolition is supportive. But Section 33846080 also talks about ways to do that. And the ways you do that is ask what will replace the demolished reservoirs. So that is critical to the criterion, and there isn't a separate set of criterion for demolition that does not involve what we'll be replacing the demolition with. That's why we've spent so much time in looking at the replacement development.
And I'm Tom Carter with the Water Bureau, and one of the issues raised in testimony was asking about the purpose of demolition review, 33445330. And what the citizen asserted was that the public's not had an opportunity to consider alternatives to demolition. And so we ask that you consult with your attorneys about the meaning of that particular provision in the zoning code, because we have regarded that... provision in the zoning code, because we have regarded that as that the venue is the demolition review, and that the current proposal comes out of previous work done by the Water Bureau and previous decisions made by city council. And so this is the time at which people are, have to consider and propose alternatives that meet the requirements. But I think that that is a question that the city attorney's office may need to consider about how that provision is interpreted.
Okay.
Or advise you.
Excuse me. Should advise you on, you might.
Get that advice. Okay. Other points again before we get to questions?
I'm actually here to help you answer questions. I have another couple people to give a little bit of.
Okay. All right. Let's do that, and then we'll get you back for questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Peter Meijer from PMA Architects. We are the historic consultants on the team, and I'd like to specifically address the comments on the Historic Structures Report and whether or not that was considered in this process. That's a very important document, and it served as a baseline for the continued work. Our office actually referenced that document in moving forward, and we augmented it with additional primary information, in which we went onsite as well as researched the changes over time that had occurred particularly on the basins. We augmented it with current structural conditions of the concrete to see if repair was an option. And we also augmented it with additional laboratory analysis so that we knew of the composition, so that when we did repair the structures. We concur with many of the points of the Historic Structures Report, particularly that they are in good condition, and that's why they are being preserved, particularly the gate houses and the dams. And so we are working with that Historic Structures Report, and so I just wanted to clarify that we considered it. It's an important baseline, and we are using it moving forward.
Okay. So that was one of my questions. So the portions of the report that referred to the elements of the site being generally in good condition were referring to mostly the gate houses and other buildings and dams that are being preserved, but not to the reservoir structure itself that's proposed for demolition?
Correct. That is where the focus was, because obviously, when the report was done, the reservoirs had water in them, and the basin, the bottom of the basins couldn't be seen, as well as if you, what we needed to augment is the number of changes that had been made to the basin parapet walls in this process over time or began, and the number of times that repairs have been made to those portions of the reservoirs.
Okay. Thank you. That was one of my.
Here, I had a, let me follow up on that.
Please.
We had a comment from someone who testified about the fence around Reservoir 3. Could you address that?
I can't remember the specific comment, but we.
It was needed, and.
I think that's a broader comment, and the best way to address it, that has always been a question from day one, whether or not the fence was needed. We had a tour of the facility even before we did the briefing for the Landmarks Commission. Members of the public were on that tour, and that fundamental question was asked, is the fence needed if it's no longer public drinking water? And so we have worked through that issue, and the Bureau of Water sees it as a protection of the public, so more of a, not drinking water security, but protection. And so we have reused the components of the historic fence. But it has been a fundamental question of whether or not it's been needed or not needed. We see the retaining of the historic fence as important to the character-defining features moving forward.
Well, I'm glad you said that. So it sounds like there's two issues. One is, does it provide a safety function? And reasonable people can probably agree or disagree with that. What you just said is actually more important to me, that you believe it relates to the historic fabric of the reservoir.
Yes. And it has been a criteria that the State Historic Preservation Office has wanted to see retained as well for that very reason.
Okay. Thank you.
So that'll be built of reused materials if it's built?
Yes. You know, it's eight feet high now. You saw the images. Those components will be used again and lowered, so it won't necessarily.
Testimony by Eric Nagel about a new fence? Is that, are we talking about the same thing?
I think we're talking about the same fence.
We are talking about the same thing.
My name is Dan Hogan. I'm a project manager with the Portland Water Bureau on this project, and I'm also a registered professional engineer and geotechnical engineer. And I wanted to just discuss a little bit about the landslide and the seismic vulnerability of the existing basins. The claim that the slide is stabilized isn't quite true. It still creeps along at a little bit more than an eighth of an inch a year. And over 20 years, that's three inches. 50 years, seven inches. That's a base, the basin can't handle that, and that's one of the reasons we had rebuilt it over the years.
So that movement of that slide is distorting the basin? Is that what's going on?
Yes, and the parapet walls. And if you go out there today, you can see the fences are all leaning over and.
Okay.
So the slide is a concern, and any professional engineer would agree with me on that.
But yet, the buildings have been described as generally in good condition, and are they less affected by the slide?
They are not in the slide area. The slide reaches down into the western part of the reservoirs. All the buildings are on the eastern side.
Both reservoirs?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct. In a seismic event, we've analyzed how much the slide's going to move, and our model was based on what we're proposing to build. And we're looking at up from anywhere from a foot to two feet of movement, and we'd expect something similar, if not more, in the existing state. That would mean those reservoirs walls would have moved one to two feet, and that's not going to hold water. And that's not even speaking to the structural integrity of it. They're not designed to today's seismic codes or any seismic code whatsoever. The original design, I believe, had rebar every 10 feet as opposed to every 16 inches, which is more normal.
I have some other questions, actually, one, I think, for you, Mr. Meijer, which is John Zarnicki made the case that Criterion 2.4, you know, if, in his, in his understanding of it, really has to do with the depth of the water and therefore the color of the reservoir as seen by the public, and that that's, he considers that significant. Was that question considered, or whether a shallow reflecting pool would be the same experience for someone visiting the park and enjoying this spot if it's shallower versus deeper water? I just, it's a legitimate, seems to me, a legitimate question.
It is a legitimate question. I think if you step back and look at the context of historic district, there are several character-defining features that are important to the district and make them up, and the nomination listed those, not only the structures, but what the atmosphere, as Mr. Zarnicki related. And deep water was one of them. The fact that there is water is critical to that. We had studied the opportunities to do that and felt that that wasn't an overriding one to retain, so we recognize the loss of deep water, but we have still maintained the district and the character of the district. Water will still be visible from those important spots, particularly the Olmstead View from within Washington Park. So we felt that the relationship of the actual gate houses to the water was more important than the depth of the water.
Okay. This issue has come up before in other contexts. Did you consider any other factors, like the cost of maintaining a facility with deeper water, the potential health impacts of water that's not potable and may or may not be circulating in a regular basis, those kinds of things?
Commissioner Fisher, I'll have to defer that question to Teresa or someone else who can study the, answer the cost issue on that.
Could you repeat the question?
Well, we've been talking about some specific questions about the listing, but were there some other technical feasible, feasibility issues about the depth of the water that you took into consideration?
No, we did not look at that.
Good answer. Thank you.
I have some other questions, and they came up from testimony here, and that is, there was an assertion a couple of times, Mr. Fernandez, among others, said, look, we've had significant rainfall events. That did not cause any kind of catastrophic movement of the landslide. So have we overrated the potential of the landslide being a structural problem? Now, again, we just heard it's still moving and distorting the reservoir, but I assume some of the basis for this proposal, this proposed demolition, is the potential for catastrophic danger, not just incremental movement? But I want to make sure I understand that correctly.
The landslide.
Put your name in the record, Mike.
Oh, sorry. My name is Mike Stewart. I'm the chief engineer of the Water Bureau. I'm also a geotechnical engineer from Stanford University, and I'm licensed to practice in Oregon and California. I have a couple of comments on seismic things, but one thing I want to do right away is talk about the reservoir. If we left the reservoir as it was, 40 feet deep, whatever it is, we wouldn't have a place to put the reservoir underneath it. So if you maintain a reservoir that we can't use for whatever purpose, there's no place to put that volume of water in a protected facility. And without moving the entire piping system to some other location, possibly condemning land at some other location, we had to take the volume that exists and use the majority of it for the tank that's going to be underneath it and put the water feature on top. So it's important to recognize. The landslide, there's about 4 million tons of dirt in that landslide. Most people have seen the Empire State Building. It's like 14 or 15 Empire State Buildings full of dirt, and it's moving. And if that landslide pushes hard on the concrete, it will win. So when we design the facility, we try and fix it so that landslide will not push on the new facility, because it can crush the concrete. So that's why the occlusion's in there. Is it a huge concern? Well, to me, I don't like to talk about these matters like that. It's a concern. It's a concern like liquefiable soils, weak foundations, differing rock types. It's just something to consider in the design, and we have carefully considered that. We've put enough space in there that we can go through this maximum credible earthquake, which also includes a subduction zone earthquake, and have enough space left there that the reservoir will be functional, and we can do what we need to, put the occlusion back. Regarding the seismic event itself, I spent the morning speaking at the American Society of Civil Engineers Structures Congress, talking about seismic resilience. And right now, there are 18 bills in front of our legislature dedicated to trying to help the state become seismically resilient. Unfortunately, it's kind of a good news, bad news story, earthquakes in Oregon. The good news is, we don't have them very often. The bad news is, we don't have them very often. And the reason that's bad news is that most of us have a hard time getting our minds around things that we haven't experienced. It's much easier if you've gone through it. You don't have a tough cell in Los Angeles or the Bay Area. Here, we're lucky. Our earthquakes, large ones, are infrequent, but there's a 37% chance of a magnitude six or greater earthquake in the next 50 years in Portland, and it is worth thinking about, and it's worth designing, too.
Thank you. Couple other questions that were raised in testimony. Mr. Berger raised the question of land ownership. Is it clear that we have the right applicant here, that the Water Bureau is the right applicant? All right?
We've discussed this in detail internally, and we've had it reviewed by Terry Thatcher. The ownership is in the hands of the City of Portland. The city owns the property. The city council apportions responsibility for various pieces of property and can change that apportionment. But as long as that land is owned by the City of Portland, where it came from and what kind of parcels it is is almost irrelevant. It matters among the bureaus to sort internal funding out, but as far as ownership is concerned, it belongs to the City of Portland, and there are no issues with it.
Okay. Thank you. Just sorry, going back through my notes from testimony to see, citizen involvement, you know, again, this is, somebody said this is not democracy. Actually, they're right. This is quasi judicial land use hearing. So, sorry, folks, this is very stylized, but we have to make sure that the procedures have been followed and make a decision based on the evidence and code. One of the requirements is that public involvement be properly conducted. So state law requires certain people be notified, not, I believe, everyone who's affected by a potential decision, but I just want to double-check that, and it might be a question for the city attorney, or it might be something that needs to be addressed if we called the hearing open a little longer, and that is, given that people beyond the immediate vicinity to the usual perimeter of a land use case are affected by this decision or potentially affected by a decision, was notice proper? And again, I can, I won't ask the city attorney, answer a legal question like that on the fly, but I want to put it at least up.
Well, Mayor, we do, we do have the benefit of a 25-page summary in the record of a two-year public outreach, and it, I've actually never seen something like this, because we maybe don't have a lot of these kinds of proceedings.
Right. And we had testimony that it was extensive and.
And it has actually, it has it down to the areas where project information booths were held, where things were posted, postings, posters on page 17 with dates, websites. I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying this meets or doesn't meet our standard, but it's pretty extensive.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we might want to get that question reviewed. I think that may cover the points that I had, and again, there have been requests to hold the record open, so the council should discuss that in addition to any other questions somebody else might have. But other members of the council have questions for the applicant? Okay, then, I'm going to close the public hearing, but we'll decide the question of whether we're going to keep the record open or not. What's the council's pleasure about that?
Does that mean we just have deliberations after the record close?
I think our options, we have multiple options there.
Yeah, the council has discretion to either continue the hearing to a date certain or leave the record open, and we typically do sort of a 7-7-7, three-phase aspect of that. And again, the council does have discretion as to which of those to choose, but I believe there were a couple of requests that, to me, sounded more like leaving the record open. Typically, we'd leave it open for seven days from today for any party to submit additional evidence, testimony, or argument. Following that, there'd be another seven-day period for any rebuttal evidence, testimony, or argument, and then following that, and at that point, the evidentiary record would close, and then there would be another seven-day period for the applicant, which has the burden of proof, to submit any written argument. And again, that's not necessarily evidence.
I guess I'm not used to us going that, going through that convoluted process. We have, in other cases, held the record open and given people the chance to provide further information or even rebut. I've had a request to rebut statements that were made here late in the hearing. So I'd certainly be open to a seven-day extension in order to give people the chance to rebut anything they've heard or to reflect on anything they've heard, and then give the council the opportunity to deliberate and decide, but I haven't been through that 7-7-7 sequence before.
Mayor, I would propose, and we've done this in other land use proceedings, add an abundance of caution, particularly when people have said during the hearing that they would like that chance to have an additional last opportunity to put something in writing, and since this council takes that very seriously, I would propose we keep the record open for seven days, and we set a time certain now for us to come back, the records. and we set a time certain now for us to come back, the records would close after seven days and we would come back for the sole purpose of deliberating.
Right, that's actually, we did just in the previous case this afternoon, so.
Does that present any challenges in the timeline of the applicant? So what the proposal we're considering is that we would keep the record open for a week and then come back shortly thereafter for the purpose of rendering a decision.
So typically, my experience in land uses is you keep the record open for seven days for new information and then we as the applicant have seven days to rebut any new information. Are you proposing that or are you excluding that?
We're proposing to do what we did in the previous hearing, which is we've closed this hearing and we're going to give people a chance to respond to anything they've heard and to provide that response in writing to the council, to the council clerk, we'll consider it in our decision.
So, Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but, and I'm not sure what happened in the matter that was for you at two o'clock.
Hope we did that right.
Well, I'm sure he did, so, but I can't really speak to that, but I do think it is important to, I mean, it's a little bit difficult because you can end up talking about a cycle that never stops and I understand that concern, but there's the matter of, say, leaving the record open for additional evidence and then the rebuttal opportunity that comes after that is important. And again, as Commissioner Fish said, perhaps this is an abundance of caution, but, and I understand the expediency issues but in my opinion, a little extra process and opportunity in these cases is never a bad thing.
So to the applicant, if we had a one-week extension for people to submit comments and a one-week period to rebut and we came back shortly thereafter, would that adversely impact any timeline you're operating under?
No, we could, we could work with that.
Mayor, that's what I would propose, seven, seven, and then to get a time certain now, shortly after the fourteen days for the purposes of deliberating.
I like that, is that all right with the rest of the council? So, let's look at the calendar please and set a date for the council's deliberations. Everyone needs to understand, we're not going to continue the public hearing, we've completed the public hearing but we're going to give anyone here or elsewhere in the community a chance that wants to provide written response or written testimony in addition to what's been provided here to send that to the council clerk. Copies will be made for everybody on the council, we'll review that and then give a chance for the applicant to rebut anything they choose to rebut. So that would be two weeks from today, right?
Two weeks from today would be May seventh?
What's the first, what's the next Wednesday, Carla?
The Wednesday.
After that?
After that is the thirteenth and it's, it's pretty booked already and you're gone Commissioner Fish in the morning.
Can you, can you fit us in the afternoon? What's at two?
IPR code change and a possible heritage trees.
Mayor, could we bump it, could we done this before, could we put it at two?
Yeah, I think, given what she's just described, that's not going to take all afternoon, so let's set it for some time that afternoon.
We could do a two PM on the thirteenth.
Two PM?
For that final, and then you said the testimony closes on, in a week, would be April thirtieth.
And just, just to clarify, if I may interrupt again, seven days from today is April thirtieth so I think what we're talking about is having the seven-day period, first seven-day period expire at five PM on April thirtieth.
Right.
And then having another seven-day period for rebuttal evidence that would expire at five PM on May seventh. At that point, five PM on May seventh, the evidentiary record would be considered completed and closed.
Right, and then the council will deliberate and decide the case on the thirteenth.
Correct.
Okay, everybody clear on that? If so, then we'll continue this hearing on that, sorry, continue this proceeding on that basis and then we are adjourned.